Is a parent able to differentiate you all? Sometime this question made me so furious. Sometime this question made me so furious that I'm dead sometimes I feel why people stare at us in a way that either they will eat us or we belong to some another planet. Two seconds silent for those people. Because this thing made us, this is the worst part of life to being a twin. Apart from this childhood is era in which, in which we can do anything the way we want to do. Because we are free from all constraints and responsibilities of life. Now let's walk with me in my maturity phase where I have suffered the most. So I was in best person and I was in grade one. I was in.
Toastmaster.
Yes, are you saying something?
Uh, I, I think you are delivering your prepared speech if not.
Uh, Ursa.
Yes.
I think.
I asked you to introduce yourself. I asked you to introduce yourself to the meeting. Since you're into the meeting.
Oh, sorry, I thought that you are saying to.
No, it's alright, it's alright, it's alright. Okay, so after the guest introduction is done, Toastmaster of the evening, I'd like to hand over the charge to Toastmaster of the evening, who is none other than our past president, Toastmaster Imran.
Today I close the door to the past, open the door to the future, take a deep breath, step on through and start a new chapter. First Toastmasters and guests, welcome to our first meeting, welcome to our new meeting. We have entered in a new year. New immediate past president, new, new president, new VP Education, new Sergeant at Arms, new VP PR and new VP membership and finally new VP Secretary and Treasurer. So let's start the new beginning and start the meetings, meeting officially. Uh, fellow Toastmasters, uh, the meeting is divided into three segments, that is the prepared speech segment, the table topic session and finally, uh, before that I request everyone to please mute their mics. Thank you very much. So in Toastmasters meeting, we have three segments. The first part called the, the prepared speech session. In prepared speech session, uh, members are allowed to deliver their projects from different pathways. Currently we have eleven pathways. So they deliver their projects from different pathways. And second, we have a very excited table topic session, which will be conducted by our senior most Toastmaster, Toastmaster Madam, Sayad Madam Rizvi is going to call any, uh, he's going to call members or the, or the guests and give topics to them and they have to speak for about one minute to two minutes and thirty seconds. And the last segment called the general evaluation, that is the main part, what we have done, uh, what are the areas in which we have to work and what are the strongest area that will be explained in our general evaluation segment. You know, Toastmasters also teaches us that how to work with a team. And to conduct this session, I have a very dedicated Toastmasters with me, which will play different roles during the meeting. First, we have the grammarian, Toastmaster Hiba Raishan. Hiba Raishan, are you there?
Yes, can you hear my voice?
Yeah, yes, loud and clear. I request you to explain the role grammarian. Over to you, Toastmaster Hiba.
Okay, as the grammarian, um, I would be making note of the incorrect usages of words, phrases and grammar used by the speakers during the prepared speeches and the table topic sessions. And I would also table topic prepared speeches and table topic sessions and I would also be making note of the interesting words spoken by the speakers during the speeches. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Hiba. And now the word master, our new Sergeant at Arms, Toastmaster Ali Ashar Anjum. I request you to unmute your mic and explain the word of the day.
Good evening, Toastmasters. The word of the day is belter and its meaning is what, tactic, lead or initiative or a leader we can say, it, it can be also used for, for indicator of the trends. So you can use the, uh, uh, or your scope. Uh, I present is a belter of the KTC. You can use this word in this way or any other way you like. So over to you, Toastmaster of the day.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Ali Ashar. Our timer today is none other than distinguished Toastmaster Talha Bin Hamid. Could you unmute, unmute your mic and explain the role piece?
Thank you so much, Toastmaster of the day. And just a second. Yes, so as timer, my role will be to time the various segments of the meeting as well as the individual speeches. Most of the speeches are five to seven minutes. So on five minutes, I'll be showing the improvised green indicator. On six minutes, the improvised yellow indicator and on seven minutes, the red indicator. The grace period for every speaker is thirty seconds after which they will be disqualified from voting. Similarly, for table topics, the time will be one minute to two minutes and for evaluation, that will be two to three minutes. Uh, so it will be my effort to time all the speeches as well as the segments. Over to you, Mr. Table Topics Smart, uh, sorry, Toastmaster today.
Thank you very much, DTM Talha. Uh, since we have entered in a new year in our first meeting, so we decided to have before, before the meeting, we have, we decided to have our business segment. So I request the VP and secretary to, to conduct the business segment.
Uh, can I intervene? Um, I need to explain the role of the tech host.
Yes, you will be asked later, Toastmaster.
Okay, fine.
Toastmaster Talha, over to you for business segment.
Yes, thank you so much. First of all, uh, this business segment is supposed to be conducted by our secretary, but he will be joining the meeting late. Uh, in fact, his joining is doubtful, so he gave me the permission to present this report. So this will be a short recap of our last meeting. Uh, in our last meeting, there were two speeches made and uh, of, of course, the XCOM was elected and sewn in, in the, as a full quorum of the members. So I present these minutes for the approval of the current meeting and over to you, Mr. Toastmaster of the day.
Thank you very much. Uh, DTM Talha, okay, so our tech host today, am I audible? Yes, our today's, uh, our technical host is Toastmaster Shamam Khan. So Toastmaster Shamam Khan, could you please explain your role?
Uh, yes, thank you, Toastmaster Imran Rana. Uh, as you know, this tech host is about facilitating the online meeting and keeping it smooth. It's a new beginning for me too because I'm the tech host for the first time. So let's, let's pray wifi at my end keeps running. Um, with permission of the president and Toastmaster of the evening, I would like to share my screen first for some tips that we all must know about when we are joining the meeting. Can you see my screen? Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Fine. So here are couple of, company more than around five, uh, instructions and tips uh, to avoid any delays or disturbances due to technology and keeping timelines. The very first is the, um, every attendee must mute their microphones. So take a second and please mute the ones who have not already done it. After that, please take another ten seconds and rename to enter full name with Toastmasters. And if you have a role, then also mention that role. If that is a speaker, then mention that you are a speaker. To take ten seconds, go to the participants list, click on your name, you will have two options, click more and there you will see the option for renaming. Can you all do it? Can you all follow me? Can you all follow?
Yes.
Okay, so a right Toastmaster, a PM and if you have a role, write your role with your name. And if you are a speaker, then write your name and then you, you are a speaker. Um, I don't think that we have many guests today. If there is any guest, then you would write guest instead of Toastmaster PM. Is there any guest there?
Uh, yes, uh.
Okay, so please, please do that. Rename yourself as a guest so that we know who is today joining us as a guest and who else is having some role or this speaking. Have, have you all done it? Uh, Mohammed Talha, can you write it? Are you a guest or a Toastmaster?
Oh, so, uh, I'm not sure how, I, how you guys would categorize it, uh, me, I attended one, one or two meetings in twenty seventeen. So, uh, I'm not doing it for the first time.
Fine, fine. So then you are a guest. Uh, you're not, not a Toastmaster at the moment, right?
Alright, okay.
Uh, but what you can do is write guest and TM together. So we will know that you are a guest Toastmaster. Just for our understanding. Everyone has done it. Thank you so much. And if you have not done it now, please keep checking. Uh, go to participants, uh, section, click on your name, you will see option for more. Click that, you will see option for rename and rename yourself, starting with Toastmaster, a TM, your name and then your meeting role or a speaker's role or, um, any, any like speakers or any guests. Am I audible?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Toastmaster Shamam, are you there? Toastmaster Shamam. Mr. President, can we move further?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, our technical host, Toastmaster Shamam for such a valuable information.
I'm sorry, um, should I continue?
If you are not done, then continue if not.
Yeah, I need, I need, um, another few seconds to ask everyone to please adjust your cameras so that whenever we call you as a speaker or any role or a table topic speaker, you are quickly ready with the video. Can you all please do that? Thank you so much. I need to actually see you all as, uh, okay, thank you. Fine, so I'm almost done with a couple of more things. Uh, for clapping, you, you would need to show your thumbs up. Don't forget that at Toastmasters Club, the clapping is a big part of learning and experiencing. So this is all from me. Be comfortable with technology and enjoy learning at Karachi Toastmasters Club. Over to you, Toastmaster of the evening.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Shamam for such a valuable information, for such a valuable tips. I hope everyone, everyone is following. Okay, so moving on, sorry, moving on to our next role player. We have a counter and today's counter is Toastmaster DTM Shahrukh Shanavas. Over to you, DTM Shahrukh Shanavas, please explain the role.
I hope I am audible. I thought I was only being the part of evaluator, but okay. Thank you, Toastmaster of the evening. Today I am going to be the a counter for the meeting and my job is to note down the a's and um's and other filler words. Basically those words which are going to disrupt any speaker and to discontinue the flow of thought. For instance, that if I'm sticking right now, I'm going to say, uh, so these kind of a's and um's I'm going to note down and in the end, in the third session of the general evaluation, I'm going to submit my report to the general evaluator. Thank you, Toastmaster of the evening.
Thank you very much, DTM Shahrukh Shanavas. And our next facilitator is our timer. I think timer is done. Yes, timer is done. So our next facilitator is vote counter and, and vote counter, for vote counter, we have Toastmaster Imran Brazav. Toastmaster Imran Brazav, could you please explain your role?
Uh, am I audible?
Loud and clear.
Thank you, TM Imran, fellow Toastmaster and guest. Good evening. As a vote counter, I will determine based on your votes, today's winner in each category. You will be asked to vote after each segment of the meeting. Please vote by sending me the names at room private chat window. Guests are also welcome to vote. Over to you, TM Imran.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster. So Toastmaster Imran Brazav will going to share the link and if there is a tie breaking situation, then Toastmaster Imran Brazav will pass his vote and break the tie. Thank you very much, Toastmaster Imran Brazav. And let's enlighten our mood and for that we have our joke master today. And today's joke master is Toastmaster Dr. Mohsin Jamal. Dr. Mohsin Jamal, are you there?
Yeah, yes, I'm here. Could you see my face? Hello.
Loud and, yes, yes, we can.
Okay, so fellow Toastmasters and guests, Assalamualaikum. So I go to a weight loss club. So the most successful person at our weight loss club was an elderly woman. So I asked her, how did you do it? She said, it's very easy. Every night I take my teeth out at six o'clock. So over to the Toastmaster of the.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Dr. Mohsin Jamal. With that, let's move on to our first segment. Today we have super eight speakers. What an excellent lineup today. So our first speaker is Toastmaster Asgar Ramzan. He's delivering his project on innovative planning.
Yes, but, uh, there are two issues. Number one, I can't see my evaluator. And secondly, uh, I need just one minute to find out if my slide is working because this is my first time to use slide. Uh, my, because I can't see DTM Muneeb, who is supposed to be my evaluator today.
Uh, DTM Muneeb, are you, are you there?
We can.
Okay, yes, we, we can move to Toastmasters.
We can move to the next speech, no worries.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And so DTM Muneeb is about to be here. DTM Talha.
Yes, actually he confirmed, but let me reconfirm from him and meanwhile we can move to the next speech.
So so our first speaker is Toastmaster Zishan Khan and I request his evaluator, DTM Shahrukh Shanavas, to please introduce the speaker and also explain the projects. So DTM Shahrukh Shanavas, over to you.
Uh, thank you, Toastmaster of the evening. I hope I am audible. Uh, Toastmaster Zishan is going to be presenting his first speech from the purpose of this, the purpose of this speech is uh, is for the member to develop a detailed vision of his or her personal life, professional life or an organization. The purpose of this first speech is for the member to share some aspect of his or her vision. Toastmaster Zishan, are you ready? Wish you all the best. Your, your, my mic is still closed.
Am I audible?
Yes, Toastmaster Zishan, wish you all the best.
Thank you, thank you. When I look at the back of my watch, I was too. What am I supposed to do with this?
Uh, Toastmaster Zishan, sorry, Toastmaster Zishan, your voice is very low. I believe many of us are having difficulty hearing it. So can you rearrange a bit?
Is this clear? Is this loud?
Yeah, it's clear, it's clear now. Yeah.
Okay, so I need to adjust my camera level. Is this fine? Hello, one, two, three, check. Was it good enough?
Perfectly fine, perfectly fine.
I'll start over. I believe the timer will start over again and I hope so. So when I started this from there, then you looked at it, developed a vision. It was, it just came to me clueless. I had no idea what I was up with. Vision, what kind of vision? And what am I supposed to do about this and talk about it? And why even I should be giving my vision to everybody? You know, I talked to my mentor, Ajay Pala, for the first twenty minutes. He talks about going to Qatar on a boat. I wondered how do we do that? But something slipped. During the conversation, you know, when you talk to your mentors, you find you, you tend to go somewhere. And I'm glad that I spoke about it. And Toastmasters will get you there. Like Toastmasters since nineteen twenty-four has got lots of corporate sponsors. Leaders, all of them, and communicators, and sat down with.
Sorry, Toastmaster.
Good days.
Toastmaster Zishan, sorry for interrupting again, but your voice is echoing a lot. I cannot listen it properly. I'm sorry.
Um, how should I arrange this?
The, the voice is echoing.
My voice is echoing.
Toastmaster Talha, I think you are also finding it.
Try to be, try to be a closer, try to be a closer to the speaker when you are a close, I think.
It's slightly difficult, but if you move closer, it becomes much better.
Is it, is it clear now?
Yeah, it's now very clear. You can continue from where you left off. No worries.
Okay, so where was I? Yes. So what year is it? Is it twenty twenty? Just hold on guys. Is it clear enough now? My apologies, I'm messing it up and that's how it is, right?
Yes, it's clear now. It's clear now. No worries.
So what year is it? Is it twenty twenty? And Toastmasters was established in nineteen twenty-four, isn't it? Yeah, but if Toastmasters is a guess, you must be, I can tell that there is a wow factor coming. Three years time, they're going to celebrate eleven hundredth anniversary of Toastmasters. And we are going to be there. A glimpse of what we have already rehearsed. Stronger together. I'm sure nobody can forget that. And then the big four. Just imagine and picture KTC standing and opening that hundredth anniversary in twenty twenty-four of Toastmasters to the world. It sound like a good idea, isn't it? Just like everyone else has an idea of where to go and what to do. I had my premonition four years ago. See, I'm kind of an individual who does, has not settled down in one tenure. I moved from A to B to C. I haven't reached to the Z yet, but then surprises. At that time I was doing sales. Yes, you have that right, I would say. I was a sales manager, an executive as well. Things were not good. The performance was low and the pressure was high. And to be very honest, I was not, I had no idea where I was going. I was like a part in a machine who kept running and running and running with no clue, with no direction. And one night I sat down and I reflected back on my career and asked questions or questions, questions like, Zishan, you were a floater manter at McDonald's back in nineteen ninety-nine. What happened to that? You were a banker. You were reporting with the chief executives. Why did you quit? You were growing in an advocacy and you were seeing the success, but why did you leave? And then the reaction. I'd feel pretty for them now, but then I still have heart for it. And sales, you get bored easily. Already, and there was this one question happening in my head over and over again, and that was, what are you going to do with your life, Zishan? And then suddenly I saw the faces of the police I've worked with for the past thirty, forty years. And the words which were pleasant to my ears such as Zishan, you're hardworking, okay? You're honest. I'm like, alright. You're intelligent. Oh, really? You're analytical. I'm like, oh, yeah, whatever. But there was one thing, there was one skill that was common among all people. Zishan, you're a very good communicator and your English is phenomenal. And that was coming from native speakers to non-native speakers from different ethnicities that I've worked with. In sales devastated, tired, the hachy as you were. That was June twenty sixteen, I decided, or I hung on to that skill or that, that ray of light. That when I go back to Pakistan, I'm going to teach English and now I'm going to teach English in class. I'm going to join Burleth and that's where I have set my start. And then in August, I'm sure under the arms, the heavy gushing went. And it is where my two and a half year old daughter got her fingers in the door. Her name popped out, the situation was bad. I had to wind everything up and perhaps that was my calling. I came back, attended my family and embarked on the journey to become the language facilitator at Burleth. And this is how I envisioned myself in twenty sixteen. And here I am now, but there is something yet missing, that question how. That will be there in the next presentation. Over to you, Toastmaster of the evening. My apologies for the technical delays.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Zishan. Moving on to our next speaker, we have Toastmaster Ulam Khader. His evaluator is Toastmaster Ali Asher Anjum. I request Toastmaster Ali Asher to please introduce the speaker and also introduce the objects of the speeches. Over to you, Toastmaster Ali Asher.
Good evening, Toastmasters.
Am I audible? Am I audible?
Loud and clear.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. Okay.
Yeah, okay, so Toastmaster Ulam Khader is leaving his project on, on level two and extending your communication style. Is, this project title is my communication style. Uh, the purpose of the project is. The purpose of the project is. Is. The purpose of the project is, is for the members to learn about different communication styles and, and, and I identify his own style. Moreover. The purpose of this speech is for the member to share the impact of his, 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 his style on others. So, oh, all the best, Toastmaster Glam Carter for his speech. Over to you, Toastmaster Glam Carter.
I need to share a presentation over here. Let me just share it.
Yes, you can.
And then I'll just set it up as well. Just need thirty more seconds. Is this, everybody is able to see the screen?
Yes, yes, yes again.
Toastmaster of the day, my fellow Toastmasters and guests, good evening. I recently completed the level one of my pathway. Presentation mastery and today is my first project of level two. As stated by my evaluator, the project is understanding your communication style. Every day, every hour, every minute we communicate. Sometimes we communicate verbally, sometimes we communicate non-verbally. We as a human being cannot live without any communication. We communicate from the day we are born, we communicate from the day we die. So it is very necessary for a Toastmaster to understand what sort of communication styles are there. So what I'll do is first to explain the types of communication style which we Toastmasters have or need to adapt in different situations. So let me take you through the types of communication. First style is direct communicators. These are those individuals who come to the point very quickly. So whenever you are talking to them, you have to be straight to the point. They will not waste a single minute. They will come directly, they will not beat up. So be very careful dealing with them. Next is initiating communicators. Today we started our meeting and DTM Talaa started the communication before and engaged everyone. This is how initiating communicators are. They interact with each other. They are, we are able to easily interact with them. They tell stories. So they are good to communicate with. Next is supportive communicators. These are those who are very steady, calm approach. They are good listeners. They will listen to you carefully and then at the end of, they will give you a good advice. Last but not the least, analytical communicators. For me, these are the most difficult ones. Because whenever you are talking to them, you have to be very carefully what you speak. Because they will come back to you with the facts and figures and they will challenge you. So whenever you communicate with them and whenever you want to make the communication effective with them. You need to know your numbers on the tips because they are very good at mathematics. Now. What is my communication style? I went to the Toastmasters International website and I did a self-assessment. And any guesses? What could have been my communication style after the self-assessment? Please unmute my mic and let me know. Any guesses?
Second one?
The?
The second one.
The second one? Okay, it was the supportive one. I did a self-assessment and it was bingo. And I totally agree with this, with the Toastmasters International self-assessment has done for my communication style. Yes, indeed, I am supporters. So. What is the impact of my communication style with people around me? So let's start with. My colleagues. So my colleagues, so I, my communication style has an impact on my colleagues and they trust me a lot. They believe in me. They believe whatever decision I take will be in the best interest of them and in the best interest of society and the best interest of the organization. Why? Because whenever they speak, I listen to them very carefully and I give the best of the best decision. My friends. My friends trust me a lot. They believe in me and they share their secrets. It is up to them because they get a shoulder to cry on. My daughter, she calls me a best friend because of my supportive style. She shares all the secrets with, she is unable to share with her mama. And last but not the least, the biggest character in my life. Who could it be? None other than my wife. The only secret of this seven years marital, happy marital life is that what I do is. I say. Yes, dear. So these are the impacts of my communication style, the supportive one. And thank you very much, everyone. Over to you, Toastmaster of the day.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Ulam Khadur. Moving on to our next speaker. And our next speaker is Toastmaster Asker Amzan. So I request DTM Dr. Unik to please introduce the speaker and I request you to read out the objectives of the speech. Over to you, DTM Unik.
Toastmaster Asker is going to present today from the path which is called innovative planning level three and project number one. And the title of his project is to present a proposal. The objective of his project is for the member to practice developing and presenting a proposal. The member will deliver an organized speech about his or her proposal. The proposal may affect any area of the member's personal or professional life or the Toastmasters Club. The member may present the entire proposal or aspect of it. The speech may be humorous, informational or any style the member chooses. The style of the speech should fit the content. The speech is not a report on the content of the present, a proposal, present proposal project. We are passing through a time of pandemic. When we are looking for masks to cover and N ninety-five mask is very popular. So everyone knows about N ninety-five these days. Toastmaster Asker has come up with a proposal. And his title is N twenty-five and N fifty. I have no idea what these are about, so I have to listen to Toastmaster Asker. Please welcome, give a big round of applause to Toastmaster Asker.
Madam President, dear Toastmasters and guests. Two thousand twenty was not a good year in our national life, not till the first July two thousand twenty. Many precious lives were taken away by pandemic and other heart-wrenching and other heart-wrenching tragedies such as road accident, road and air accident. The regret is all those accidents were avoidable but were not avoided. We paid a heavy price as a consequence. One accident stood out due to its sheer tragic nature and grabbed the headline on the eve of Eid. Yes, you guessed it right. It was a airplane crash. Accident of the same nature, albeit beyond the breaking news, had already been taking place somewhere in Karachi, Quetta and Job National Highway earlier in the plane crash, which had claimed more lives than the plane. This is exactly the road that I am talking. This road is originate from Karachi to Quetta and onward to Job. The first part of the road is from Karachi to Quetta called N twenty-five. And the onward Quetta to Job, it is N fifty. I'm sure now I, I was able to clear the N twenty-five and N fifty enigma. The first part which is called N twenty-five runs through the southern Baluchistan. And the second one is from Quetta to Job which spreads across the northern Baluchistan. Now, although the accident of the this road and the air crash apparently have no link and happened in different location, yet they have a striking similarities in their ghori nature and claims. While PIA have taken the life of Khalid Sherdil, a civil servant. The Karachi Quetta Road killed one of his friend, colleague and beach mate who was serving as Commissioner Makra. Now. The bodies of the both officers were charred beyond recognition and they were only identified after fifteen days through DNA test. Yet, yet both accident were different in at least one striking way. While a high-level committee has been formed with the foreign expert visiting the site and they recently submitted the report to the highest office of the country. No one bothered about the accident taking place this road. The accident, the data from the accident tells a harrowing story. This road, believe me, killed three forty-two people in two thousand twenty up to June twenty-five. Three times higher in number than the passenger of an elevated plane. So it goes without saying that the safety of this road need to be ensured to save the lives and avoidable injuries. But how do we do it? Mostly, we, this is exactly the road. And we need how to, how to ensure the safety of this road in, in Baluchistan, which is considered to be the murderous road in my province. But how do we do it? By removing the common causes of the accident, which included but not limited to the speed ignorance of traffic law, culture of non-compliance of safety standard. Sometime it is driver error, other time it is animal crossing. Last but not the least, non-availability of emergency unit to save the lives after the accident also plays role. Although government of Baluchistan recently established an emergency service, but it yet to take a ground. Now all mentioned, now all international bodies also agreed with these causes and documented them. But at the same time, they believe that these are only the fifty percent causes of the accident. The remaining fifty percent they believed is all about the size and the structure of the road. In order to take care the remaining fifty percent. Apart from them, they decided to build their road wide and separate with the idea of devil carriage. This is how the devil carriage is. As you can see, it is a road dividing with a strip either with a grass or any concrete between the traffic coming from the opposite side. And usually such roads have a more, these roads have a one line, one or more than one line. Now. This Quetta road, the N fifty and, and, and N twenty-five and N fifty need to be converted devil carriage road in order to save the accident. And this is my proposal which I am presenting. Now, we need to, now, how do we justify it? We can justify it in an important way. When I say that we need a devil carriage in Baluchistan, it does not amount asking for moon. It is doable. It is very much possible and thoroughly justified within allocated or affordable budget because it is not a game. Last but not the least, the devil carriage is common worldwide, including in Pakistan. You know, I, I can, I'm showing you two roads from this very country which are devil carriage. All these roads are available in all provinces except in Baluchistan. I repeat, except in Baluchistan. And if you think that the roads being built in Baluchistan under CPAC are devil carriage because they are modern, then they could not be more wrong. Let me take you one of such road in Baluchistan. This is my M eight, Gavad Rattodaro Road. Let me take you back. This is your M nine, Karachi, Hyderabad Road. Just see the difference between M nine and M eight. Now, the question is, why Baluchistan has been singled out? Well, officers from the federal government behind the closed door for decayed believes that it is all about recovering the investment. And you know what? These officers are entirely justified. Facts are facts. We have to embrace the reality. Punjab, Baluchistan is not Punjab. One devil carriage in Lahore, for example, generate revenue in tool takes five hundred times greater than the all roads in Baluchistan combined. But this is not the end of the story. In fact, it is the beginning of this, of it. Estates should not act like a wholesale shopkeeper with an eye on profit. While estate should do everything in its head to, to raise its revenue and improve the lives of the people. It should not be a money-making machine. Because the first duty of the estate is to protect the innocent citizens from the avoidable death. For this to happen, federal government needs to take breathe and take a bold step. Is the task difficult? Yes. Impossible? No. Over to you, Toastmaster.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Asker. Could we have ten to fifteen minutes break for the mouse? What do you suggest, President?
Yes, please.
Okay, so.
Mr. DME, as a timer, I suggested announce ten minutes so that people are assembled before fifteen minutes.
Okay, so we are taking ten minutes break for the mouse and after ten minutes we will start. So let's have a, let's have a ten minutes break. Toastmaster Tanha, should we start now?
Have ten minutes passed.
You didn't start the time?
I think we can, we can start.
Two minutes. We still have.
As long as.
Two minutes. We still have one minute to be exact.
Okay, thank you because, thank you so much for that, I didn't time the break, so thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Since you are the evaluator and your speaker is there, so we can start producing.
No, are you talking to me, T M Mra?
No, I am talking to Toastmaster Tanha.
What did you say to me? I thought you were talking to Azkarsa.
No, no, I am talking to you, I am saying that since our next speaker is Toastmaster Navinta, so you are, okay, Toastmaster Anam is there?
Sir, can you speak a little louder please?
Is Toastmaster Anam present with you?
No, she is not there with me. Actually, I will be doing the evaluation in her place as I already informed you.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, we can have, yeah.
Okay, welcome back.
Yeah, please.
Welcome back, fellow Toastmasters and guests. Toastmaster Shamaam, Shamaam, could you, could you stop sharing this night? Thank you very much. So, I was just wandering through these speakers lineup. And suddenly my eyes stop on a speaker, my eyes stop on a speaker. And here comes our frontline speaker, frontline soldier, Toastmaster Navinta Karan. Who is going to be evaluated by a DTM Talha Bin Hamid. DTM Talha, I request you to introduce Toastmaster Navinta and his and her projects. So, over to you, Toastmaster.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, Toastmaster of the evening. Toastmaster Navinta, first of all, I am extremely proud and privileged. That we are exceptionally proud and privileged that Toastmaster Navinta is a member of our club. Because not only she is an amazing speaker, but she is also one of the frontline soldiers against the fight against COVID nineteen. She is, she is brave beyond our wildest dreams. While we just sit and discuss about how bad the situation is, she actually goes out and does something about it. And today she will be delivering her first project of level two, Understanding Your Leadership Style. The title of her project is, the title of her project is. A merger of equals. The purpose of this project is for the member to identify his or her primary leadership style or style. And the purpose of the speech is for the member to share some aspect of his or her primary leadership style. Or discuss leadership styles in general. Please put your hands together for Toastmaster Navinta Karan, A Merger of Equals.
Thank you, DTM Talha. A merger of equals.
Sorry, can you be a little, yeah, just a little bit louder please? Can you come just a little bit closer to, yeah?
Am I audible now?
Yes.
Thank you, DTM Talha, a merger of equals. Leader is the one who knows the way, goes the way and then shows the way. By definition, leadership is the art of motivating a group of people, bringing them together, achieving a common goal. But for me, leadership is about influencing people in different ways. By what you say, what you do and how you influence people to bring them together. And how you make them to do their best. Like, you know, how to influence, how best they can do, bring the best in them, it's basically leadership. Okay, so leadership is all about being passionate about what you do, how you do, how you encourage people, motivate themselves, how you inspire them. Leaders always to take the hard path, difficult choices, self-sacrifice. In order to gain the trust and confidence from their team members, right? Basically, leadership is the capacity to translate the views into the reality. Leadership inspires people to try different concepts into unknown territories and you know. Proper guidance of knowledge and transferring into the trust, loyalty and. Motivating other person in your team. So, basically, there are different types of leadership. A same person cannot be a leader in every situation. Like, if I am a leader at my workplace, being a boss at my substation, the same person be at my home and my family. I am not the leader because my father is leader. So, all you have to do is switch yourself from different leadership style. So, basically, there are four leadership styles. The first one is autocratic leadership. And autocratic leadership, it's like basically the directive style in which you are the boss and you order everyone. You don't welcome kind of suggestions. And it's the quickest form to be, quickest thing to be, make a decision like you know, time is not used in this type of leadership. So, but it is not as such appreciable by the team members because it's a kind of bossy style. So, this is all about the autocratic leadership. The second one is legislative relationship leadership. In this, you trust your team members, you welcome their opinions, but the main leading power, the main decision-taking powers is in your hand. You do welcome their suggestions, you know, you motivate them, you work as a team member, but the main authority level is about, is in your hand. So, that is the legislative relationship style. The next was democratic and participative. In this relationship, the leader invites and encourages the team members to come. And basically, he divides the task into multiple things like, for example, if there is a wedding, so he will decide that the main thing I'll do this. And you have to do the decoration and the next person will be watching out for the meal preparation. So, he trusts the other person completely and divides the task into every member. So, this way, this leadership style is all about democratic or participative leadership. But it eventually takes a little bit more time as compared to the autocratic leadership. The last one is bureaucratic leadership. In this leadership, it's about time, rules, regulation, that you have to do this thing in this minutes, in this hours, in five days, in ten days. The leaders always make some rules and regulations and time management. So, it's the bureaucratic leadership is all about that. So, what are the few attributes or qualities of a leader? The number one is they radiate positive energy. As we are, we are seeing that people are bullying down each other companies, like they are. Keeping negative comments about the other company to bring it down. It's not an attribute of the leader to throw a negative comments about each other. The true leader is always about being positive, he transfers, he delegates the positive energy among the client, the uncoordinated, it's spicy. So, that's really a quality of a true leader, right? The next one is they have a proactive attitude. Like, if you are the, you are the manager in a restaurant and if something happens that you are unable to deliver the food to the guest. So, you don't score your waiter or the person that why this happening, how this happening. The other thing you becomes like, okay, if this happens, then what should we do? We should suddenly call them to apologize and make things work. So, this is the best thing I really feel it, proactive attitude, you focus on how we can just. Shift, how we can manage the situation instead of figuring, instead of making it like why this happening, how this happening. The next is they delegate tasks completely. They focus on difficult tasks, different tasks and they divide the task into different persons like. Like in a group, they just distribute the task in different person. They are approachable, they always welcome feedbacks, ideas. And they welcome, they use it and they are very easily approachable, this is the best quality about a leader. Okay, they do what they expect from others. So, the next is they are accountable, the main problem with us is like we don't be accountable ourselves. We always blame others if something wrong happened, so you know, the best thing is they are accountable, so you should be accountable. And they are decisive, right? Sometimes you don't know whether it is right or whether it's wrong, but you have to take the decision for your team members, for your family or whatever. So, quick decision is also the quality of a leadership. It's, but in different styles, you have to switch yourself from home to work, from work to family, from. From to any other meetings, you have to switch the leadership style. If your actions inspire others to dream more, to do more, to learn more, like we definitely are here, thank you.
Thank you very much, our frontline soldier, DTM, Toastmaster Navinta, sorry. Moving on to our next frontline soldier, Toastmaster Dr. Mohsin Jamal. His evaluator is Toastmaster Ussah Kaval. President, I request you to please introduce the speaker and also. Explain the objects of the speech, over to you, President.
Thank you, Toastmaster of the evening. Toastmaster Mohsin Jamal is actually a student in medicine, so if not on the front line. And his speech is from the evaluation and feedback first speech. The title of the speech is pause and that is really curious. I am really curious what he might be giving on that. The purpose statement is, the purpose of this project is for the member to present a speech on any topic, receive feedback and apply the feedback to a second speech. So, over to you, Toastmaster Mohsin.
Pause, pause, pause. It's broken. Fellow Toastmasters and guests, Assalamualaikum. Our ability to pause is just as broken as my walkman. But it wasn't always the same. Long ago, when our ancestors were hunters and farmers, they had lot of free time. They could look, they could observe and they were not overstimulated. But now it's totally different with so many distractions with TV, mobile, social media. We are so stimulated that we have lost our ability to pause and appreciate all the things around us. I remember reading this article that people when they are about to die, they have these common regrets. And some of the common regrets were, I wish I had taken a vacation. I wish I had stayed in contact with my family members, I wish I had worked harder or I wish I had not worked harder. And the main reason why we have all these regrets is because we don't pause. We are so busy living our life, then when opportunities come, we don't recognize them. And if we only pause, it is like you are walking on a track, you are walking on a path and you have multiple options, multiple paths that you can take. But you are so busy and you did not pause and so you mindlessly kept on walking on one path. Now, and finally, when life stops you, and if you notice, I said life stopped you, not pause you. Because when life stops you, it's usually at the end. Now, you have all the time to think, but you have, no, it's too late, you cannot go back in time, you cannot. You cannot go back in time, you cannot amend your mistakes and all you left are regrets. Now, the pauses that I'm talking about are of different durations and different types. Now, I will be sharing with you different type of pauses that I take in my life to live a better life. The first type of pause that I will be sharing is called still point. Now, the good thing about still point is that it can be taken in thirty seconds to one or two minutes. It consists of three steps. The first step is to pause. You just pause from everything that you're doing. The second step, you take a breather. So, the third step and the second step, when you take a breath, you basically clear your mind. And the third step is to remember. And the remember part is very flexible. You can remember anything. It could be a prayer. It could be a motivation, a message that you want to give yourself, like I can do it. Or it could be a reminder, like, why am I doing, what am I doing? So, the three steps are, you pause, you take a break. And you remember. Now, the good thing about the still point is that you can take it at any time. And it's preferable if you take it many times. The second type of pause that I'm talking about is actually a planned pause. So, I take a thirty minutes to two hour pause. So, when I was talking about the still point, I take it multiple times in a day and. I have no plan for it. I just suddenly feel like, okay, I need to pause and I take a pause. But with this type of second pause is that I actually plan these pauses. I tell myself, okay, from six P M to seven P M. I will not be using my digital devices. I will taking a pause, I'm intentionally pause. Now, there are variety of activities that you can do during this time, like taking a walk or just reflecting on your past mistakes and thinking, okay, what could I have done better? Or you could plan your future, like what path to take, or you could just talk to yourself, or you can just relax. You can use this pause in multiple ways. Now, the important thing to remember here is that this type of pause is planned. You don't want to be in an autopilot mode where you're not thinking and you're just doing. Another good thing about this type of pause is that. Scientific research shows that when we take a pause, here we are not thinking too much and we are not focused too much. We call this type of thinking called diffuse thinking. And the good thing about this is that when we let our mind wander. The problems that we are facing, our brain starts working on it and our brain is working on those problem in background and starts solving them. And so, another benefit of this type of pause is that. The third type of pause is called extended period pause. So, this pause is usually from days to weeks long. Now, you normally don't take these type of pauses very often. And you take these type of pauses when you have a major decision to take, like you have decided, okay, whether I want to do. Whether I want to keep working in this profession or I want to change this profession. Another way, when you take this type of pause is when you want to reward yourself, like you have been working for last six months or you're working for last one year. And you said, you tell yourself, okay, I've learned good work. Now, it's time to pause and take a vacation, a week or two week long vacation. So, you take a vacation, that's the type of pause you take and you recharge your brain. So, fellow Toastmasters and guests, I'm not asking you to give up all your possession and move to a mountain and start living as a hermit. But we human beings are forgetful beings, forgetful creatures. We need constant reminder. So, when I tell yourself to pause. I want you to pause and appreciate the blessings you have. I want you to pause and see if you want to keep walking on the path that you are walking. Or if you want to change the path. I want you to pause and recharge your brain. I want you to pause so you don't have any regrets. I want you to pause and I want you to pause often. So, over to the Toastmaster of the evening.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Mohsin Jamal. Actually, I was just taking a pause and I forgot to unmute myself. Thank you very much. Moving on to our next speaker, she is from Dow I B H M, Toastmaster Tuba. Tuba will be evaluated by Toastmaster Zishan Khan. Toastmaster Zishan Khan, I request you to introduce the speaker and. Object of the speeches, of the speech. So, over to you, Toastmaster Zishan.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to confirm if I'm audible.
Loud and clear.
All right, that's good. Toastmaster Tuba, welcome to K T C Club. It's a good opportunity for you to embark your journey. And you will see that excellence will embrace you. Her project is the icebreaker from. What was it?
Presentation mastery.
Yes, presentation mastery. Thank you very much, Imran Rana. And the speech title is pretty interesting, be a warrior, not a warrior. The speech length is four to six minutes. The purpose of this statement is, the purpose of the speech is. That the member to introduce him or herself to the club and learn the basic structure of public speaking. Best of luck, Tuba. I am excited.
Okay, so, delivering a speech or delivering a baby is the same labor process, is the same interventiveness that involves. It was a gloomy night. I met my parents nineteen years back on thirtieth of September two thousand. But there's a little twist in my story that I wasn't born alone. When I opened my eyes, I saw that there was a cute little baby who was sleeping beside me. But for a while, I got petrified and profound thoughts were going through my mind that how could someone be so similar to me? So, now it's the time to introduce my twin sister and her name is Bismar Fatma. The saddest part is that I'm only, only one minute elder than her. Yes, this is the most saddest part. Apart from this, you all will agree that the life of twins and the life of normal children is quite different. So, here are some questions that people often ask from twins and the question are, O M G, are you guys twins? Hmm, who is the elder one? Do you guys born on the same time? Do you guys hurt or sick on the same day? Is your parents able to differentiate you both? Two-second silence for those people. Because sometimes your question made me so furious. People stare us in a way that either we belong to some another planet or else they will going to eat us. This is the part that every twins have faced in their life. So, the childhood was the era in which we can do anything the way we want to do, because we are constrained from all responsibilities of our life. We live in a carefree mood. So, guys, is the time to enter with me in my maturity phase where I had suffered the most. I was in grade nine and I was an obese person and because I used to eat six times a day. Yes, you all have heard right. I used to eat six times a day. After some time, people started torturing and abusing me that lose some weight or else he will leave you, nobody will like you in future. Nobody would be a friend of an obese person, literally. Honestly speaking, those words were so harsh for me. But you know what? I took all those comments as a positivity. I start working on myself and I went on a portion control diet. In six months, I lost eight kgs. Yes, I did it. I was really happy. I went at my cousin's place for a feast and that day was really depressing and I was devastated. Because people start such unusual, people start unusual questions to my mom that, O M G, what happened to her? Is she was ill for several days? Tuba, what have you done to yourself? And the most goofiest thing was said by my maternal aunt to my mom that, nah, he, I'm telling you that. She is not well at all, Nazar has caught her. At day, I realized that, don't rely on others' opinion for your own happiness, because only you are responsible for that. Make changes as you see fit. Don't allow others to judge you or to do bad comments on you. Don't change yourself for others. Be sterling and be courageous. So, this was the end of my first suffering now. The second suffering of my life was. I got admission in D I M C, Dow International Medical College and you all will be aware that the high fee structure of the fees. My parents totally and clearly said to me that this is not affordable for us, Tuba, so you have to choose an alternative for yourself. With an heavy heart, I took admission in I B H M. Everybody was related and celebrated, celebrating this news. Except my paternal uncle. He was continuously saying that, there is no scope of your field, what will you do in future? Because of his criticism, I was disappointed for a while. After some time, my maternal uncle came from Islamabad and he said such few kind words to me that. My dear child Tuba, a field is known by his student. So, be that a student that your field is known by you. Honestly speaking, those words were so overwhelming and so motivating for me. I'm really jammy to have in my life. After my parents, he is my mentor. So, I can go on this for an hours, but due to the limitation of time, I will sum up my speech with this beautiful thought. That accept yourself, love yourself the way you are. Don't choose that part that weighs you down. Instead of worrying that what you can't achieve, accept that thing that you can create. Be a warrior, not a warrior. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Tuba, for gracing our club with your icebreaker speech. Moving on to our next icebreaker, Toastmaster Ikran Abin. And his evaluator is D T M Khalal.
She, she's not, not here, she's not here. Next speaker and last speaker is Toastmaster Babar Ali Hasnain.
So, do we have Babar Ali Hasnain? Babar Ali Hasnain. That's more like it. So, moving on, our last speaker, Toastmaster Babar Ali Hasnain. His evaluator is Toastmaster Asgar Ramzan. Toastmaster Asgar, I request you to please introduce the speaker and. Also introduce the object of the speech. Over to you, Toastmaster Asgar.
Thank you, thank you. Dear Toastmaster, we are always engaged and relaxed when. Babar Ali speaks. Because Babar Ali has an entertaining personality and he chose pathway called engaging humor. This becomes a little combination. Today is doing his path. As a project is know your sense of humor. The purpose of the project is to begin developing a collection of humorous stories and to present a speech. That of course include humors. Please welcome Toastmaster Babar Ali.
Can I just intervene for five, ten seconds, Babar? I would like everyone to, I would like everyone to switch on their videos since it's a humorous speech, so let's see how people are enjoying it. So, make yourself available. That will be a good thing to see. How about it, Babar? What do you say?
Yeah, that would be better. If everyone, everyone can do that, that would be great.
That's, that, let's do it. Thank you so much. Sorry for intervening. Now, you can start.
Okay, so please.
Before starting, I request all, everyone to please mute their mics.
Thank you, D M Imran, D M Shamaam and D M Master. I appreciate it. If you also like to trot along around the globe at the back better, give me a thumbs up. And if you enjoy the bloopers, the mess ups, the game that comes along with traveling, you enjoy that also, give me a thumbs up. Fellow Toastmasters and guests, a very good evening and a warm welcome to the session. It was back in two thousand fifteen that we at the time we decided that we are going for a trip, international trip in fact. And we were on the same page. We decided that our father recently bought the new iPhone eleven Pro, so he will be the official photographer of the event. So, back in two thousand fifteen, we started off our journey from Lahore, Karachi, Dubai and England. We started our journey from Lahore and back in fifteen, when we landed here, here in Karachi, guess what was my biggest wish? Oh, Lord, save me, myself, my phone, my wallet from predators, murderers and kidnappers. Fortunately, the prayer was answered unfortunately only for two days. The third day, while I was going from the main road of Karachi via the overhead bridge, I was crossing the bridge and I saw a. A decent person walking towards me in black shalwar to me. I was a bit astonished. As he approached me. He smiled at me and he put his hand there on his pocket and said, you see the pistol? Give me everything you have while you laugh. And there I was. There's this wallet, this phone and my backpack, everything is for you. And I was giving him everything while I laughed. Considering these lifelong memories, we decided to start up a stay in Karachi and headed from Karachi to Dubai. And I was really excited. I was so excited that there will be a lot of Arabs from all around the Emirates to welcome me. There will be Arabs all around me. The moment I landed at the airport, to my disappointment, there was only one encounter with Arab. And that was in the form of the officers stamping my visa, my passport, that's it. And then there were Indians, Pakistanis, Bangladeshis and Nepali. Sir, my taxi sir, come with me sir, I will take you sir. Hardly any Arabs to see. Then I was busy roaming around in the mall and streets of Dubai. In Dubai, you cannot be mugged the way you can be mugged here in Karachi. The way is different, but it is definitely possible. They have their own way. One day, I was walking in the corridors of Mall of Ahmed. And I saw apparently a Lebanese guy walking towards me. He walked up to me and said, sir, would you like this food? This is original Arabic foods, only for hundred rupees. I smiled and I said, no, I don't like it much. I'm not buying it. I'm not buying it this way at least in the corridors of the mall. He said, nothing to worry, I will get you one for free, just follow me. I was very much clear, I'm not going to follow him. But it took him only sixty seconds to convince me and I was following him right outside the mall. He took me somewhere in the slum area, some quiet, quiet space of outside the mall. And there, what I saw was three more Lebanese friends of him and before, before he gave the other three as well. Now, the salesman said, sir, I will get you the one food for free when you buy the other one for one fifty rupees. Now, there were eight eyes gazing right upon me and each eye holder being six feet tall, three feet wide. The choice was clear. I had no other option but to buy the one, only for one rupee. This is how my trip at Dubai ended. Once again, collecting the lifelong memories from Dubai, we headed towards England. We were pretty much excited. We were, we were to the new place. We had one week's day. So, I had a good family time, good friends' time, had a lot of activities, a lot of adventures in UK. And then when the, when the weekend approached, we had to move back to Lahore. I decided, let's enjoy the class and I booked the flight from British Airways. On the, on the travel day, we checked into airport, everything was very smooth. We got seated and the plane took off. I can exactly recall, it was just twenty minutes in the air. I could feel some pinky pungent smell in the air. And when I looked around, everyone seemed so calm. But when I observed closely, I realized everyone is having that irritating feeling. And then in a very short while, everyone mustered up the courage to say, oh, what smell is this? What is this smell? It's so pungent. Who poured in the washroom? And then everyone was yelling. Everyone could hardly breathe. There was such a strong smell in the air. Even I could hardly breathe and I could not, I didn't know what to do. It was all airtight and we could, there was a bad aroma in the air. After like four, the chaos of four, five minutes, the Thai police came direct from the pilot. He was on the announcement. Ladies and gentlemen, this is your captain. Due to the unfortunate reasons, we, we have to revert the flight back. Due to the unfortunate reasons, we uh we we have to revert the flight back to Heathrow. And there we were, taking a big sigh of relief. Fortunately, when we landed back in twenty minutes and took a breath of fresh air. Then British Airways gave us the next scheduled flight and have we had a wonderful flight from Heathrow to Lahore. You think the travel has ended up? Yes, the travel has ended up, but not the fun part. When we reached our home, we were also excited that our father was official photographer with his iPhone eleven X eleven Pro. For the photography, we all gather around the TV and. We made sure that everyone is excited to see the pictures. So when we turned on the pictures on the TV, guess what? In ninety percent of the pictures, then that my father had taken, all he could see was a big round. Yes, of my father like. Thank you. Over to you Toastmaster.
Thank you very much Toastmaster Babar Ali Hasnain. I request you to please lend me your bag because I'm struggling with speeches. I may find some good speeches in your bag. Thank you very much Toastmaster Babar. So with that, our first segment, prepared speech session has come to an end. I request timer, has everyone qualified?
Everyone, yeah. So everyone has qualified except Toastmaster Asgar. Who went five seconds overtime. So I lay this. Yes, I lay this heavy burden before the new president. And this is her first first major test. Let's see how you do, Madam President.
I think it's okay, we can uh let it go for the first time.
Don't let it go. That's the president's decision, so we have to agree with her. So with that, I request everyone to cast their vote for the best speakers. I must say today's all the speakers were very eloquent, very amazing speeches today. So I request everyone to cast their vote.
The ballot has appeared in the chat box.
Yes, so with that, we are now moving to our second second segment. That is table topics session. For that, I request we have. A very senior and seasoned Toastmaster, Toastmaster Sayad Najam Resby. Say, Madam Resby, over to you. Toastmaster Najam, are you there?
Toastmaster Najam. Oh, I'm unmuted and I started my video. I hope I can be seen and heard also. Is that right?
Yes.
I can be seen, I can be not.
Yes.
I can't see myself. No, I can see myself also. Okay. So we've started a new year on our Toastmaster journey and. Considering this at, I've decided the theme of the day would be new beginnings. This was a suggestion from our ex-president and I must appreciate it and thank him for it. So our topics will center around this theme, a new beginning. And obviously, when there are beginnings or any beginning, there's also some change involved because you can't start something new unless you. Uh change from something old. So with this introduction, I'd like to start sharing my screen. So that you can easily see the topic clearly.
Uh sorry, I will intervene. Everyone, please keep, all the speakers, please keep an eye on my window. Because here the timing will appear, so you need to be careful.
Okay, now can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So our. So this is our topic for the day and our word of the day is bellwether. I'm not sure whether the word word master introduced the word or explained the word. A bellwether is basically something that leads or the origin of the word is quite interesting. Uh when you have a flock of sheep, the leading sheep, you have a bell around the leading sheep and the other sheep. Follow this sheep which has a bell. So we have a new XCOM and we all have to follow this new XCOM. Uh so we can consider them to be the bellwethers of this club now. So the first topic. I'd like to invite Toastmaster Sidra Awan. Is she here? Can I have a confirmation? So Toastmaster Sidra here?
No, she's not here.
She's not here, I saw it before. Okay, then uh. Toastmaster Sharuk. Sharuk still here?
Yes.
Okay. So Toastmaster Sharuk, the question for I have for you. Do you believe in New Year resolutions? Why or why not?
Thank you Table Topic Master. I hope I am audible. So. Do I believe in New Year's resolution? Of course I do. Because every time the year ends, every year this happens. Whenever the year comes to an end, I will, I'm full of regret, guilt. And I will try to make a list of what to do and what not to do. And by the end of that year, I will see that most of the aims and objectives I had aimed for, I have lost them. Really, it has happened that I have been successfully able to complete my New Year's resolution. And I think this is a very common phenomenon. That we make some expectations for ourselves, which is very, which are very difficult to attain. But with every year, I am hopeful that, okay, this time I'm going to be kind to myself, I'm going to try more hard. And this time I'm actually going to attain that particular goal, which I have said too. Uh as I have also shared it in the past, that I have suddenly gained a lot of weight in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. And these two years, I have made the resolution that yes, I am going to work out, I am going to see my diet. I have a couple of friends who are continuously bashing me that Sharuk, you are fat, you are fat, there is no progress. Nowadays, I'm trying to convince them that no, I have made some progress, I have reduced some weight, but they're still saying, okay, the weight machine is lying to you. She is trying to make you happy because of this ongoing crisis nowadays. So the point being that yes, we try to make resolution every year and some sometimes we accomplish our goals and sometimes we don't. But we should not stop trying. The aim of this resolution is to give you hope. And that to gather a strength and to give a task that you were unable to do the previous year. And this year, this year is going to be somehow different for you. With this, I would like to. Hope that each and every one of us, even though this year twenty twenty is not going so well so far. And we are listening the thorough of bad news, but still by the end of this year, we are going to make a resolution for the next year. And we are going to be hopeful and cheerful. Back to Table Topic Master.
Thank you, thank you. For the next topic, I'd like to invite. Toastmaster Hiba Raiz. Hiba, are you here with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay, Hiba. So here's your topic. What difference can a new club executive committee make since the Toastmasters program is so structured already?
Okay, and could you repeat the word of the day?
Bellwether. Bellwether means to lead or.
Okay, to lead. Okay, leader, leadership.
Now.
Yeah, what difference can a new club. Good evening fellow Toastmasters and guests, is my voice audible?
Perfectly.
Okay, good evening fellow Toastmasters and guests. The new XCOM committee which was elected last week, that is on the twenty fourth of June. Can make a huge. Difference to this Toastmasters program, uh that is by. And since the Toastmaster program is already structured, we have a. Everyone knows that the three segments, we which are always there. The Toastmasters, then current XCOM which was elected last week and. Make sure that the structure is followed rigorously. And they may introduce a bit of changes by shuffling the structure that is this. Three segments, like you know, I don't know. By shuffling it here and there and. And also, you know, they can introduce a bit of incentive for the. Speech speeches part, they can introduce the speakers who. Uh complete the speeches on time in the structured program, they can. Introduce a bit of incentives, for instance, apart from educational goals, they can, you know, give them certificates or mugs. Or issue shields, small shields as a token of, you know, motivation. And also, and the structured Toastmaster program includes competitions. And they can. Keep the competitions going on as it is as like within. As competitions are held every three to four months, so the competitions must keep going on and. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Toastmaster Hiba.
Toastmaster Najam, can I uh can I ask you to stop sharing this presentation when a speaker is speaking?
Okay.
You know, it will be better to view everyone when you stop sharing it.
If you use speaker's view, I can read you either way.
Yes, I wanted everyone for the gallery, but that's all right. If if you can do it, it's better. If not, that's all right. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, is that okay now? Okay. So I, if we had Muhammad Talah here as a guest, is he here now?
Uh yeah, I'm here.
Okay Talah, I have a topic for you. Your topic is. Looking at the pandemic, the world is going through, what opportunities do you see?
Uh great. So, okay, fellow Toastmasters, good evening and. Uh right, so on the top issue of, on the topic of opportunities arising from from this pandemic. Uh the pandemic obviously is uh is quite a, not only a discomfort, but obviously. Quite a morbid event, looking at the death toll around the world, but at the same time, it has. Uh given the possibility of opportunities in many areas. Uh one of those areas is, as I see is e-commerce. So we have established e-commerce companies working around in a country, for for instance, some of those are Daraz. For instance, uh and these companies are seeing huge traction within the larger populace these days. Going to the impossibility and difficulty of people going around shopping themselves. They now have the option of simply getting their stuff delivered through these online services at their home. Through the comfort of their computers and and in the comfort of their homes, in the safety of their homes. Uh moreover, uh the pandemic, the COVID nineteen pandemic is also. Uh made a a lot of businesses reconsider their their practices and their operations in large. So for instance, we have restaurants that. They're the restaurants operating in a country can largely be categorized into uh into those which. Uh prepared for this pandemic by investing in technology preemptively. So for instance, when when the when the COVID nineteen was not there, those businesses invested in their online marketing in. Uh in their the online delivery. Uh and and the delivery services while some, while the other half did not. So the the businesses which invested in a large part in e-commerce and in home deliveries are now benefiting. Uh to a great action, their businesses, their finances are much better than the the ones that did not. So the COVID nineteen pandemic has also made this imminent and very important that businesses invest. In R and D and not only, you know, simply consume the good profits that they have in normal days. Uh other than that, obviously, the the safety, the personal protective equipment industry has also. Uh seen is also seeing huge opportunities these days. Uh just two or three days back, I was reading the newspaper that Pakistan is now at the brink of. Making its own ventilators, which are to be used in our hospitals. We are also making. Because of a comparatively good standing of our textile industry, we are also making masks which are being exported to the western world. And our personal protective equipment is considered of good quality. So these are some of the broad strokes of the opportunities that are arising due to in this pandemic. And that that can surely be considered a ray of hope in these dark times. Thank you.
Thank you. Toastmaster Talah, thank you very much. Well, now the next topic, I'd like to invite Fahim Uzama. I can see that he is not driving anymore. So I suppose he's now, he can give his speech to us. Are you here?
Yes, I am. I'm just like gonna change the view to screen. To the slide view so that I can see the topic.
Can you please repeat that? I couldn't hear you very clearly.
Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yes.
Right, okay.
Okay, now the topic is. When you start, when you're starting something new. When you're starting something new, do you wait for the perfect conditions or try to fix the things along the way?
Right, right. Uh fellow Toastmasters, first of all, Madam President. Toastmaster of the evening, fellow Toastmaster, the topic master. I'm so glad to be here and joining you and everybody. Do we wait for the perfect conditions to happen or it creates something along the way? For me, I am the believer in creating something along the way rather than. Creating something which is of of perfect sense. Let me share with you the example of Microsoft. If you remember, if you are old enough like me. You remember the Windows day when the windows was full of bugs and other sort of glitches. And so many other American companies were of the similar sort of sense when they created and innovated along the way. The examples come to my mind are Walmart, others like Nike and all. So if you see that they are all which have created something and created excellence along the way. Not everybody is born of the Jeff Bezos kind or of the Steve Jobs kind. Even in our daily lives and I'm being the entrepreneur who has started off a couple of small ventures. I've seen that you cannot wait for the perfect conditions to appear. You have to create something which is progressively improving. And you learn along the way, you learn on the repeat, you learn along the on the job. So this is something which is of essence and we have to. internalize it back to the table topic.
Thank you very much, thank you. Very interesting to hear that you're an entrepreneur. I think I picked the perfect person for this topic. But this is a question among lots of people who want to start something and they, they wonder whether, you know, they have to first plan very long-term planning and then start something or just to start something and then learn along the way. I think you've given us very sound advice. Now, we have with us today Toastmaster Unib. Toastmaster Unib has been an excellent Toastmaster over the years. He's shown very good progress. I personally was a member when he joined the club and I've seen how he's progressed. So I think the next topic would be appropriate for him. Toastmaster Unib, are you here? Can you hear me? Toastmaster Unib? I don't think, I think maybe he's not here.
He is online, but maybe he can't hear you. Can take one more last speaker.
What did you say?
I said he is online, but maybe he can't hear you. We take one more speaker and then we can wrap up.
Okay, okay, okay. So Toastmaster Maryam Iqbal.
Yes, hello.
Okay, the topic I have for you is why do you think some societies adopt changes better than others?
Okay, so do I have time to think or I can speak right now immediately?
The word of the day is, okay, would you like to change the topic? Would you like me to change the topic?
Actually, you have to start speaking meanwhile, think along the way because that's how table topics works.
Okay.
And the word of the day is bellwether.
Okay. Okay, so this is Maryam. Hello, everyone. Basically, societies adopt change, some societies adopt change in a better way because they are more technologically advanced. And they have strong infrastructure and also they have a backbone that includes their wealth. And like if you compare the west, western countries, then for example, I've been to Australia. What I have seen there, there is a level of equality among everyone. Like if I compared with Pakistan and Karachi specifically, then in Karachi, there is a huge difference between the area of Clifton and the area of Landi or Korangi and their living lifestyle. But when I compare it with Australia and other western countries, then they, they have a same level of lifestyle. And even the, they're the profession, the profession that is a pellumber or other labor work. They are all enjoying similar luxuries that professional worker like engineer or doctors enjoy. They have cars, Banglows and same sort of shopping malls in their, in their areas. But when we see here in Karachi, it's totally opposite. So it's basically also depends on the level of corruption in the countries and the level of honesty among people and so on and so forth. That's it from my side. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Doctor Unib, are you here with us? Doctor Unib, not here, I think. Okay. Waalaikum salam, Doctor. The topic that I thought would be very appropriate for you because you're an experienced Toastmaster and we have a lot of young Toastmasters here. So I'd like to ask you, based on your own experience, what advice would you give to a new Toastmaster?
Right. Excellent topic as we are emerging from a situation where we have recently successfully completed a year. There are a number of people being attracted to the Toastmaster program. Now, what is best for people? If I look at myself, I, I wonder. And, and that's a serious, it's not something that I am, it's not a joke. But what I believe is that I discovered this program a lot late in my career. So if I could actually advise people who are young, that's, they need to latch on to the program and if there is one thing that can make difference to their lives, not only within their, within their careers, professional careers, but also within their family lives. But what will it, how will they improve? I think I've seen a number of people coming in and staying with the program for a short time and then doing few projects and then leaving. And then also doing, coming and not doing the projects. I think that's like one a bad habit which Toastmasters we all fall into, but I think what my recommendation is that if you plan a year, every other meeting, you just commit to yourself that you are going to give a project. So in your pathways, we have cheerleaders, we have people who are torchbearers of Toastmasters, they can tell you what to do. But my simple advice is, is the projects have most learning. And if you ask what is unsecret, it's a practice. It asks you whether it's practice makes the man perfect, no, it's the perfect practice that makes a man perfect, Mr. Table topic master.
Thank you. One last topic, I think, that I can hand over to our Toastmaster of the day. Sad, are you here, Sad Khan? Okay, Shamam, can I give you a topic? Shamam?
Yes, yes, please, why not?
Yeah, sure, I thought you'd like your priority to speak. The bellwether is our word of the day and I think so far, nobody has been using it in the table topics at least. So your topic is you agree with the statement, you can't change the people around you, but you can change the people around you.
Thank you, table topic master, TM Najum. Well, changing people is a very tough thing. And so I'm personally a believer of individualism. And I strongly believe that everyone is, as they are brought up or they have gone through the circumstances or whatever the environment they have been brought in. So, so changing them is not my thing actually. But your topic is quite interesting that you can't change the people around you, but you can change the people around you. And it's, I think I need to then read psychology some of it, some, sometime to see if I cannot change the people around me, but I can change the people around me. What I can see in it is the meaning in change. Maybe it's not that kind of a change, the definition of change in these two statements is not that which is traditional, like changing people from something to another thing. Maybe it's just about whatever they are, if they are not good. They can be told that they can be better and maybe in that way they can be changed. But I will get back to my opening of my speech that changing people is not my thing. Actually, I would only, you know, I would only believe in people getting and realizing themselves if they need to change for some situation, for some people, for something that should be done. And if they are not ready to do it, then I feel that I am not the one to, to propose anything to that. I hope I have made my point over to you, Toastmaster Najum.
Okay, thank you, thank you. That if you can't change the people around you, you should change yourself, catch yourself, new company. You should not be with the people that you are if you feel that you can't change them.
Oh, wow, I didn't get that. Yeah.
Yes, yes.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay, over to our Toastmaster today, Toastmaster Imran, over to you.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Najum. Timer has everyone qualified for the voting.
Actually, everyone but my name's a Toastmaster Mohammed Talha also has the same habit of going overtime. So he
I'd be requested to change his name. So, President, what do you suggest?
How much did he go overtime?
By, by one minute.
Is qualified.
Come again?
Is qualified, one minute is too much.
Okay, Toastmaster Talha, I request you to please announce the name for the vote counter so that we can share the list.
So I'm appearing from different windows because the internet keeps disconnecting on my wifi. So the other connection is on data. So the speakers were DTM Charuk Shahramas, Toastmaster Hiba Raiz, Toastmaster Fahim Zaman, Toastmaster Maryam Iqbal, DTM Doctor Unib and Toastmaster Shama.
Who's the vote counter? Who is the vote counter, please?
Toastmaster Imran Raza is the vote counter.
It's Toastmaster Imran Raza, we'll be floating the ballot.
I've already voted.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Imran Raza, and thank you very much, Toastmaster Talha. And thank you very much, Toastmaster Najum, for conducting such a wonderful table topic session. I request you all to cast your vote for the best speaker. With that, our second, the second session of the meeting has come to an end. With that, we are moving now towards, towards our third session that is general evaluation. For that, I request Toastmaster Maryam Arid to please take the charge and proceed. Toastmaster Maryam, over to you.
Am I audible?
Loud and clear.
Oh, so go to night, fellow Toastmasters and guests, because it's eight fifty. So I'm better aware that we are running late and I'll write this short and quick. So evaluation is definitely very important because through evaluation, we get to know that where we do well, the points that we excel, the areas that we did well and the areas where we can improve and make ourselves better. So without any further delay, I would like to tell you the format of this evaluation segment. So we have, first of all, the prepared speeches evaluation, in which every prepared speech will be evaluated by the respective evaluator. Then we have the table topics evaluation and then we will have the reports from all the meeting facilitators who were working the controls. And lastly, would be a very general summary of all the evaluation in general which will be conducted by me again. So without any further delay, first of all, let's go towards these speeches and the prepared speeches. The first speech that we had was by Toastmaster Zishan Khan. And this was evaluated by DTM Charuk Shahramas. So I'd like to invite DTM Charuk to evaluate Toastmaster.
Thank you, General Evaluator. I hope I am audible. Am I audible?
Yes, you are. Yes.
Toastmaster Zishan, you presented your project visionary communication pipe. Define your vision. The title of your speech was two thousand sixteen envision myself. Before I begin my evaluation, I must say that Toastmaster Zishan is a very difficult speaker to evaluate. So I will try my utmost best to take, to take all the precautions while I'm evaluating it. The purpose of this project is to share the vision. And we know from the ongoing political scenarios in our country and beyond our country that vision is something very difficult to share and Toastmaster Zishan took upon him to share his vision with us. So it is not an easy task. The great thing about, the great thing about Toastmaster Zishan was his eye contact. Because I have been struggling a lot with working this Zoom application that I'm, I often get confused to look at the camera or the screen or the speaker. For the eye contact of Toastmasters, Zishan was spot on. Voice, there were some technical issues, but otherwise I know that the voice modulation and delivery of Toastmaster Zishan is splendid. Confidence is always there. He is always, whenever he takes the stage, he grabs all of our attentions. Body movement, again, a very big challenge during these online meetings. How to use your body because I am struggling to set up my laptop in a particular position that I can also do some body language while I am delivering my speech. So Toastmaster Zishan also completed that particular task while delivering his prepared speech about, about his, about his speech regarding vision. So he shared his personal struggle. What are you going to do with your life basically? His personal transformation from banker to being here with us and his journey of self-discovery and simply put, found his calling. So a wonderful speech by him. Area that you want to work upon, well, I could not point anything specific out. But the technical difficulties obviously because nowadays we are performing our speeches and and doing all these online sessions where we need to make sure that the apparatus is working perfectly. Otherwise, as far as a speaker goes, I could not think of anything. So the purpose of the project has been achieved and you are no doubt a good speaker. Congratulations on explaining your vision. Back to General Evaluator.
Thank you, Toastmaster Charuk for your very precise evaluation in the Toastmasters, the sound of the brilliant speaker. And it's very, it's a challenging task to evaluate him. Next, I have two requests for evaluations. One is for Toastmasters, Zishan, the value of Toastmaster Toba. And the other is the evaluation of PM Navinta Karan because of electricity issues. So Toastmaster Navita has asked me to ask her evaluator to evaluate. Toastmaster Navinta's evaluator was, I missed out on that. Can somebody please remind me who it was?
Talha bin Hamid.
Okay, so Toastmaster Talha, yes. Toastmaster Talha, there are two people who will face power shortage very soon at nine P M. So this PM Navita and PM Toba and they both need their evaluation. So Toastmaster Talha, can you please receive the PM Navita's evaluation and then you will go towards Toastmaster Zishan to Toastmaster Toba's evaluation?
Toastmaster Talha, we can't hear you.
Toastmaster Talha, we cannot hear you.
Her mic is unmuted, muted, yes. His mic is muted.
Can the technical host, the host, I, Toastmaster Talha can unmute himself, I guess. There is some signal issue. There is some signal issue. So you can proceed with the other one. Yeah, okay, so how about I call Toastmaster Zishan to evaluate uh Toastmaster Tuba?
All right, so Mr. Tuba, are you there?
Yes, Toastmaster Zishan, I am here.
Okay, first of all, congratulations for breaking the ice at K T C. You're 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 most welcome to join in as many times as you can, so. And you have started with the with the elites, so congratulations. The topic that you have chosen be a warrior, not a warrior is a pretty interesting one and you started off pretty nicely the way you have handled the language and articulated your ideas in a much more chronological order. A nice anecdote, the good thing about it was that you have engaged not only me but then all of the rest of the audiences by itself. You are by default camera friendly and audible. So keep that in mind always when you come in front of the screen and try to present in the future projects. So hats off to you, that's coming to you naturally. The story was true and totally relatable. And that actually not only engaged the audience but then it also mesmerized and you made us see what you were saying. I technically saw something um when you were talking about obese, so. I was trying to imagine, I couldn't, but I was trying to imagine you as an obese person, which I failed miserably, my apologies. But then that's the objective of your speech, wasn't it? So on the other hand, you might want to, you might want to work out on on the technicality side rather than, you know, the the speech. As you speak more, that will grow and evolve by itself. So put your put your camera phone into a landscape, this what I've tried now today. And previous speeches, my my previous speeches was on the portrait side as well. So you could try that out as as you would want to work out on your technical side. Um in order for you to challenge yourself, I would like to give you something that would that you could take into that is, take the idea of writing down the same type of anecdote or should I say the same structure of anecdote and place it into the future projects that you're going to deliver. This is going to be a little challenging for you because coming out from your personal story, it's easy, but then when you're relating it to the topic and which you're going to confront in future, that is something that I would like to see and I would definitely like to see you excel at. Hats off to you with the start, with a great start, I'd say, and best of luck with your next next projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Zishan. Indeed, Toastmaster Tuba, you're always welcome and it is a pleasure to listen to you, it is a treat to listen to you and we look forward to you attending more uh meetings at K T C. Next, I'd like to move towards Toastmaster Navinta. Uh she is to be evaluated by DTM Talha and he is here now, so over to you, DTM Talha.
Um DTM Talha, I can't unmute you.
Apologies first of all to the technical host because my internet connection is going in and out, uh am I audible?
Yes, you are.
Am I audible? Okay, I will use, I will use the other connection, just hold on.
Now we can hear you, so maybe you can continue.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, perfectly.
Because actually my wifi is very slow today for some reason, so and yes, it's gone, so am I audible?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, so Toastmaster Navita Karan, your speech was your speech illustrated a very good point about leadership that we all tend to ignore. Leadership is not about having a position or enjoying a position at all. Leadership is about doing something and often leader do the most, that's why they're leaders. So uh congratulations on this difficult project, which is not easy to make engaging or interesting because it's highly theoretical. Uh you started with super confidence, your voice was clear as a bell and your words were audible. Uh you did a good rundown of what leaders do in real life. And what I especially loved about that portion was that it was not about uh some theoretical uh uh theoretical stories or things that you read on the internet, but it was more related to real life. Some improvement areas that I would suggest is that you uh were sort of pendulumming back and forth away and towards the camera today a little bit. So maybe your movement could be a little disciplined or maybe a little more thought out. And perhaps that was because you were speaking exactly in the way that I am speaking right now, I'm in a portrait orientation. So naturally, my scope of movement is very limited. In fact, if I turn it into a landscape and yes, I know that's not a pretty sight, so bear with me. So uh that gives me a little more room to maneuver, so perhaps you can consider doing that the next time. Secondly, uh at some points, your speech took on an uneven conversational tone and your speed of speaking varied quite a bit, so you might want to work on that uh because uh that distracts from the content of your speech. Sometimes you accelerate quite a bit and sometimes you slow down quite a bit. Uh it should sound more like a speech and less like a talk. During some portions of the speech, you had some flow issues, but overall it went smoothly. During some portions, you used a lot of filler words, so that may be improved in the future. And you could have used some real life examples because we all know that you uh lead a very rich life in terms of leadership opportunities. So so you would have used examples from your real life and that would have added uh quite a lot to your speech. Uh but overall thoroughly impressive job done and over to you, Miss General Evaluator.
Thank you, Toastmaster Talha.
Thank you, DTM Talha, now moving on towards our next speaker. Uh in order that the Toastmaster Gulam Khadir and his evaluator is the new sergeant arms that we have in our executive committee and that is Toastmaster Ali Asher.
Am I audible?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Toastmaster Gulam Khadir, there were his speech on what is my communication style. First of all, I must say that the Gulam Khadir was elegant and 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 confidence uh as always. I must say that the his such gestures and the the hand movement were the quite captivating and and the and very relevant. Moreover, uh uh I love how he uh he uh he relate things uh during during his speech and I love the most that live is when he just just engage the audience with the of humor when he keep it uh accuracy in about the last member of who is the back mid mid official of the the supportive for communication aside. That is, that's why it is it the can be his mother also, but the the I love that curiosity, right? However, uh I think the think you should work on your vocal the end the uh tone of of your speech. Uh moreover, you can also with more engaging parts in your speech. I love the end and your speech was good and the fulfills the demand of the project, so that's all from my side, where to do the general evaluator, DTM Maryam.
Thank you, Toastmaster Ali Asher.
Thank you, Toastmaster Ali Asher. Indeed, Toastmaster Gulam's speech, I want to know about very different communication styles and I also started to think about what's mine and what would suit me, so it was a very informative speech, I must say. And now I would like to move towards our next speaker and that was Toastmaster Azwah Ramzan. And he has, he is to be evaluated by a very senior Toastmaster and that is DTM Dr. Neem. So I'd now like to handle the charge as the担weight of DTM Dr. Neem.
Yeah, Maryam, is this, am I supposed to evaluate right now?
Yes, it's your call if you want to evaluate right now.
Sure, okay, thank you, DTM.
Toastmaster Neem, you need to unmute yourself.
Thank you, DTM Maryam Arif. DTM Asher has presented his project with pathways of innovative planning. Level three pro project one, he was supposed to present a proposal on any topic. The idea was that this proposal could be on uh any personal matter or any social issue, so or any Toastmaster related topics or Toastmaster Asher picked up an issue which is very close to every patriotic citizen of the country and that did ring the bell with all of the audience. So I think the first objective that he accomplished was to select a topic which resonates with the audience. So he presented his um project with citing this case of pandemic and then building up on with two of his colleagues succumbing to those two incidences. One was air crash and one was a road accident. And that was very moving for the audience because uh when when you see that both bodies, I mean, he he related that uh he he expressed that both of the bodies were charred. So I think that was a great beginning and then he built up his case of deprivation of Balochistan and why these accidents and the road safety oh issue has been so grave. So he picked up the issue, built up and then linked to the cause of this accident as insufficient roads how in the province of Balochistan and then he cited examples how that could be improved upon and he focused on N twenty five and N fifty and then he uh he presented his idea and a proposal to build this N N twenty five and N fifty to alleviate this problem. Now he presented absolute clarity, your voice was very good, uh your uh voice and your eye contact was brilliant, it uh showed confidence to the audience. You I I it gave the impression that you knew what you were talking about. There however, I noticed that there was a monotonous in your voice. I there were uh number of opportunities where you could uh raise or lower your voice and there were a number of opportunities for gestures. I noticed that you had the same level of gesture throughout your speech, your hands going right or left, joining together. But you could actually have uh demonstrated with lot of other gestures. When when you were saying that the bodies were charred, I could, I I was expecting that you will have like pain in your face. I I was expecting, so there were a number of opportunities where you could actually express with your gestures. I and and then when when you mentioned about um uh to raise the revenue, maybe you could just say to raise the revenue. So I I saw that your gestures were monotonous uh and then you could just I would advise for for to challenge yourself, I will advise that you keep your gestures to neutral to the side and then start practicing your gestures. Find out opportunities within your speech where you want to change your vocal variety because I could see it just went at the same pace, like where it had a monotony there. So I think very well done and I think you've raised an important topic of the speech. So I think uh excellent project, so best wishes for the max projects, over to you, Madam General Evaluator, Maryam Arif.
Thank you, DTM Neem, for this wonderful evaluation. And next, I would now like to call uh our next speaker who was Toastmaster Mohsin Jamal. And he was evaluated by our president and new president of our club and that is Toastmaster Ulisa Kabal. So I'd now like to call Toastmaster Ulisa to take over the charge at K B A.
Thank you, Toastmaster Maryam Arif. Toastmaster Mohsin started with pause, pause, pause and he, I think it was a mobile in his hand. And that was an amazing start, I would say, using the mobile which automatically put the audience and set the mood very quickly that there was something concerned with pausing everything. I would say uh he had an excellent start and he had excellent points, the still point, planned pauses, extended period pauses. And his message that he was the with what he ended the speech was also really great. However, what I would like to see him improve was the transitions between his opening, his body and his ending. You could have had a little bit more smoother transitions. You were clear with your message, you were, your eye contact was amazing. However, you usually have that really looking into the camera eye contact and you also maintain really good gestures, just work on your transitions and you will have a really, really good speech. Back to you, Toastmaster uh Maryam, General Evaluator.
Thank you, Toastmaster Ulisa for this evaluation and our last speaker was uh Toastmaster Barbara Edith Hesnay. His project was a humorous project and it indeed made us all laugh. But and his evaluator is also known to be a very funny person and that is Toastmaster Azwah, so Toastmaster Azwah is great. Uh over to you as the evaluator.
Thank you, uh General Evaluator. Humor and stories stimulate and engage the human brain. This is my personal quotation while no during this speech I constructed it. Today, I I experienced it both of them in in your speech. You took us to your memory line and told us about an international journey, having your father as a family photographer, interesting. Uh which of course ended in disaster quite unpredictably. I think uh the the most important thing of of your speech is is this unpredictability that you kept us waiting till the end. And believe me, when when it comes to fathers and handling the camera, you are not alone. Uh some of us, the elders uh are overprotective and then go on to overcompensate things. Uh what was more important in your speech? What was more important in your speech is the encounter you had with someone who forced you to laugh while deprived you from your belonging. It's sort of dark comedy. It was very good. Then the Dubai airport, the way you told the stories that you did not, you found only one soul and the rest of them were all like us, presence over there in different name and different shape. It is quite relatable. We all almost experienced it. Now, and then the way you confronted the Latino, the salesman. Then again, while coming to the Lahore, you talked about some irritating smells in your flight. But frankly speaking, I did not get the climax or the punchline of of this irritating smell. I don't know, you know, what was the end of of this smell. But the most striking aspect of your speech is the way you revealed the selfie mode of your father's camera. That was, you know, quite relatable for all of us. Now, oh, oral, it was a good speech. The way as I as I was saying in the beginning and integrating humor with a story. Because like humor, story is is also a learnable skill, I believe. But there is always a room for to to fine tune your performance. And there is no better platform to do it than over here in this very Zoom meeting. I I I really don't know, TM Ali, whether you prepare your text and memorize it. But I strongly suggest you do it. I believe that memorization is time consuming and extra nervous but provides extra layer of protection when you are speaking. And it is more important when it comes to the speaking humorously. Because any pause or scenario creates its own dynamics while we are involved speaking in humorously. And you can, could have created more punchline than one in your speech. But overall, you know, it was good. I I expected this type of speech was full of humors. Come up with a new speech with full humor. Over to you, General E evaluator.
Thank you, Toastmaster Asgar for this thoughtful evaluation. And with that said, I hope that I covered all the speakers and the evaluators and I hope nobody is remaining. Nobody is left behind. And so we are done with the evaluation of all our prepared speakers now. And I'd like to ask the timer if all the evaluators have qualified.
Thank you, General E evaluator. I am confused, befuddled, perplexed and flummoxed. Because one of the evaluators, the DPM Dr. Nees spoke for four, four minutes and forty six seconds. And one of the evaluators who happens to be none other than our president spoke for thirty six seconds. So, Madam President, please advise what are we supposed to do with this, with these timings?
That is qualified, obviously.
Sorry, Toastmaster Ulisa.
I think both are disqualified.
The vote counter, please float the ballot accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, so for the ease of the audience, I will repeat the name of the evaluators then. So please vote for the best evaluator, which are as follows. DPM Shahrukh, Shanavaz, Toastmaster Ali Ashraf Anjum, DPM Talha, Toastmaster Dishaan and Toastmaster Asgar. So these are the five evaluators we have who have been disqualified because it can't explain. So vote for the best evaluator. And while you vote, we are now going to proceed to our next session. And that is the table topics. So the table topics session was conducted by a very senior Toastmaster, I must say. All the topics were very creative and they were very interesting. We had slides and they were very, very prepared. And that was Toastmaster Anjum this week. And the table topics evaluator would is table topics evaluator is none other than Toastmaster Zishan, who has taken already a lot of roles and gets seen in switching positions from being a speaker to an evaluator to now a table topics evaluator. And no doubt that he does everything wonderfully. So I'd now like to invite him to take over the charge as a table topics evaluator and or evaluate all the table topics. Toastmaster Zishan, are you here?
I cannot hear him or see him.
Okay, I'm here, I'm here. My apologies, I was disconnected.
Over to you.
Should I start?
Yes, yes.
Hmm. Table topics always challenging, aren't they? Yeah, but then when it comes from seasoned Toastmaster like Najam Rizvi, it becomes much more challenging and intriguing at the same time. So let's start off with DTM Shahrukh, whose topic was New Year's resolution. He's recently come a DTM and I I feel, you know, this this fresh sense or essence coming out from my side, my side, calling him a DTM. So congratulations for that. You were comfortable in your speech like always and articulate and the rhythm was flowing. You not only described the essence of the topic itself, but then but then you added your own resolutions and your accomplishments on top of that. I'll talk to you in that short period, short window of two minutes. B points. What can I say? I just couldn't find any. What I could, what I could probably challenge you with is come to the table topics more often so that we would like to listen to you more. Now, moving forward with CM Hibba. She remembers dates as if it was yesterday. And that is a very fabulous start to start off a table topic. That's up to you. And then on top of it, you carried forward the particular topic and that was what difference does it make? All the way to its completion. What you could challenge yourself with is I would like to see the rhythm in your speech, the flow in your speech, connection from one idea to another idea to another idea. That's something that I'm sure everybody would like to see that. And I've got something interesting to challenge you with. I would like to see, and I'm sure everybody would agree to it, that I want to see you recite your favorite poetry in front of everybody. And that would be something amazing to see from your side. The rest was awesome. Now moving to guest Talha. Looking at COVID nineteen, at what opportunities do you seek? Man, I need to say this because you started off fabulously. And I would like to see you polish your skills as a toast, as a toast master. And I'm not joking. I would like to see you here and compete. What you could try, this this is a tip in order for you to improve yourself a little, which you could try is remove the pauses and the fillers. Now moving to the next one. Mister Fahima Zaman. Starting something new, whether you fix it or whether you wait for it. And a very fabulously articulated message that you have conveyed by sharing your pockets of entrepreneurship experiences from here and there. What I would like to see is you could put more life to the words by adding some emotions to that. And you could challenge yourself by joining us more and more. Now, Ms. Mariam, societies adopt change. Well, your tone was fabulous. You were confident, you had an idea where to start and what to begin with. And on top of it, you're already a toast master. And I would like to see you here. Not only me, but then I'm sure the presidents and then all the ex com and everybody would like to see you here presenting. Not because, not because you're fabulous, but because we would like to see you grow. And that's how I've grown, that's how everybody has grown. So this is a very good opportunity for you to polish yourselves. Next, TM Unee or DTM Unee, advice you give to the new TMs? I think I've just covered it up. To sum it up, you have, you have just shared everything then and there with the advice that you could grab it, the opportunity now when you have the time rather than waiting for it till the till it ends. And that's the message I would like to convey to everybody, the guests, Toastmasters. And we would like to see you present more often. At least share your wisdom and thoughts with us. Now, TM Shamam, you could, one thing you could change in the people around you, very nicely done, the topic. You just flipped it and nobody, I believe no one has noticed that or maybe they have. But then you flipped it in the way and made it to your own, own likings and preferences. And the message conveyed was very well done. And on top of it, DTM Najam was actually heading the table topics, added his side of the story, which was equally intriguing. Thanks to, thanks to my evaluation, I think I've over crossed the time. Over to you, Mr. Mariam.
Thank you, Toastmaster Zishan. Indeed, we had a wonderful table topics session by Toastmaster Najam. And he shared his own wisdom and I must also say that he always used to think that which table topic is appropriate for which guest remember. There is an extra effort that he did and I like that effort that he did for the table topics. So with that said, our table topics session also now comes to an end. The evaluation now comes to an end. And now we would like to move towards the third segment of our evaluation session. And that is where I will be taking the reports from the different role holders who have been constantly noting down our mistakes and performing their roles throughout the meetings. It's their time to shine now and give us their reports. So starting with the first role holder and that is the Gremadian who was Toastmaster Hibba.
Um, is my voice audible?
Yes, it is.
Okay. This time there were quite a quite less incorrect usages of grammar phrases that I came across. But there were a few incorrect pronunciations and some interesting words. First, I'll tell the incorrect pronunciation. Someone, someone said, "horrifying", it should be "horror". Murderous, someone pronounced murderous in a very odd way. It's murderous and approachable, it's approachable. And then there were a few interesting words, "ray of light", "hung on to the", "hermit", "little twist in my story", "pungent", "desi man", "bashing" and preemptively, that's about it.
Thank you, Toastmaster Hibba, for your report. And now move on towards the next role holder and that was the word master. Toastmaster Ali, it was a difficult word and I don't think many used it. But over to you, please share your report with us.
Yeah. Only he, he, he TM legend uses right. He wrote, he did, but he used this word two to three times in his, his when he was in a town last. So that's all, over to you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Ali. This means that Toastmaster Najam, as the table topics master, did his part of reminding the speakers to use the word. But unfortunately, we couldn't. And so move on towards our next facilitator or the role holder and that was the listener, Toastmaster Ulisa.
Thank you, General E evaluator. Now let's see how intently listening to the speeches you guys were. I will get you one for free.
Babur.
Yes. Yes, dear.
Gulam Kadar.
Gulam Kadar.
Yeah.
Right? A proactive attitude.
Aswad. Doctor Mohsin.
No. A proactive attitude.
Navinta.
Yeah. Native speakers to non-native speakers.
Zishan.
Yeah. Litora of bad news.
Asgar.
Karha.
No.
Asgar.
No.
Zishan.
No.
Yes, I think nobody used it.
How can I have it?
Are a Mohsin Jamal.
Oh, yes. Rikhan.
No.
You used it.
No, I didn't use it.
Then kill that person who used it.
Toastmaster Najam. Could you repeat the phrase again one more time?
Litora of bad news.
Litora of bad news.
Shamam. TM Unee.
I think we should start naming everyone and someone.
And you're still not naming the one person who used it.
Toastmaster Najam. Toastmaster Najam. Toastmaster Unee.
No.
TM Imran, TM Imran.
I used it, I used it, I used it.
Yes, Shahrukh. TM Imran, I agree with you, she might have attended another meeting.
Shahrukh used it. Okay, over to you, General E evaluator.
Thank you, that one case that everybody was stuck at. So now we are moving towards our last role holder and that, no, not the last role holder. We have the our counter. The one who happened to use the most difficult phrase that nobody could guess. But now we're counting and telling us how many Rs and Am's everybody had. So Toastmaster Shahrukh, that's the our counter.
Thank you, General E evaluator, I hope I am audible.
Yes, you are.
Well, for the, for the role of our counter, I would just like to add two things before I finish my report. That I will, that I'm also going to be report the uses of, the use of pauses. Because pause is a, using pause is a positive way and using R and filler words like basically and um they are the negatives. So we need to avoid the Rs, Am's and filler words and if we can use pauses, that needs to be encouraged. So in the beginning of the meeting, TN Imran Raza and Imran Rana, I did not hear any Rs or fillers from them. TM Dishan spoke as a speaker, speech evaluator and table topics evaluator. So I did not hear any Rs from him. But as a speech evaluator and as a table topics evaluator, I have, I I listened to some best uses of pauses. Then Gulam Kadar, a very good speech with respect to using pauses. So we need to listen to their speech again to learn to see how to use pauses. Then Ali Ashar, not during introducing the speaker, I did not hear any Rs, Am's or fillers when you were introducing the speaker, not even as an evaluator and not even as a role holder. So congratulations, Toastmaster Asgar, I did not hear any R or filler word, but I did listen to one Urdu word when you were delivering your speech. As an evaluator, I did not hear to any Rs. TN Navinda, I heard only two Rs during the speech, but that was during your transition. So transition is a period in which a speaker tries to grab, to catch bird. Because the speaker needs to go from one idea to the other idea. So that is a, so that was the idea. Rusa Kamal, President, I did not hear any Rs, Am's or fillers. Mohsin, Toastmaster Mohsin, a brilliant speech, it was totally about the use of pause and what is the function of our counter and why we should do more pauses. So your speech is basically how to use pauses. So that was totally in line with my role today. So and again, you used brilliant pauses. I heard only two Rs in the beginning of the speech, then it was smooth setting. Toastmaster Tuba, I could not hear any Rs, Am's or fillers in her speech. Toastmaster Babur Ali Hasnain, again, very good uses of pauses in his speech. Toastmaster Najam could not hear any Rs or fillers. Toastmaster Shahrukh, well, I put it two Rs in the beginning of the speech. The rest, you guys are the best judges, judges for me. Toastmaster Hibba, as a speaker, I did not listen to any Rs or Am's or fillers, but you were using N and a lot as a filler word. So that's pretty much it. Toastmaster Tarha as a guest, so I am not, we are not supposed to give the report on the guest, but. You were, but you are a very good speaker and you use ahs only in the beginning. Then it was a smooth sailing. Uh, famous Zama, he's our former president of, from, particularly Toastmasters and I think he presented his speech after a couple of years. So again, I could not listen to any ah, ums or fillers. Toastmaster Maryam, no ahs and but her speed was a bit high. So when you are, when your speed is high, then there are chances that you can make some ahs, ums or fillers or similar mistakes. Toastmaster Unnie, only one eye in the beginning, then the smooth sailing, great use of pauses by the way. Toastmaster Shamam, great use of pace and pauses. And by her, when she was delivering her speech, uh, it was a good example of how to use pauses. Two ahs in the middle of the speech. And then Toastmaster Maryam, General E evaluator, she has been holding this entire session. And I could hear only two ahs in the introduction. And throughout the session, I did not hear any ah, ums or fillers. So that is my report, General E evaluator. Thank you.
Thank you so much, TM Sharok. You have been very careful in noting down all the ahs and ums and. Stayed very vigilant about the meetings. So thank you for putting in all this effort. And now the timers report. The, respect no mercy from him because he's already disqualified to offer those masters from the evaluation uh, segment. And so I hand over the charge to him to tell us about how the timings have been.
Thank you so much, uh, General E evaluator. Uh, we started twenty minutes late. So, not, not the best place to start. Uh, the prepared speeches session was supposed to start at. Uh, the prepared speeches session was supposed to, uh, start at six fifty, but started at seven oh six. So you were lagging behind by fifteen minutes by then. It ended at eight ten, whereas it should have ended by. Uh. Eight o'clock. So we gained, we regained some of the time here, but then, uh, the table topics went way overtime. And the meeting should have concluded by nine, but we are at nine forty. Uh, all the, as I've already reported on the individual time, so I don't think, uh, it's needed. But all the prepared speakers, uh, qualified and only one speaker went overtime for just a few seconds. So. That is a very good showing. The table, uh, in the table topic speeches, uh, uh, again, most of the speakers stuck to the. In, uh, to the limit except for one speaker who went overtime. In the evaluations, one of the evaluators went way overtime and rest of the evaluators stuck to the time limit. Table topics evaluator, uh, was supposed to speak for three and a half minutes as a rough token of thirty seconds per speaker. But he spoke for five minutes, thirty seconds. Uh, Gramarian presented a very comprehensive report in only forty-four seconds. And our counters report lasted for three minutes and sixteen seconds. Uh, but again, that is directly proportional to the content of the meeting. So, uh, amazing job done. Uh, so much, so much evaluation in so little time. Over to you, General E evaluator.
Um, thank you. If I can have a second, I would also like to have a few seconds presenting the tech host report, if you allow it.
Okay.
Okay, um, I just want to thank, uh, everyone who had renamed them. Uh, including Toastmasters, including guests, including the guests who are already Toastmasters or had been Toastmasters. Thank you so much for renaming yourself, but still, I see a lot people not renamed. Um, and I'm not sure what is the reason behind it. Maybe they didn't get their cat box when I was sending private messages to them again to remind them. So maybe, uh, from now on, they are careful about it. Um, I noticed that videos were on and a couple of videos we were not, uh, you know, um. Respectful to the speak, speeches. So maybe when videos are on and I didn't have a, um, uh, you know, the authority to switch off the videos. Uh, yes, I could have also done that. So, um, thank you so much, everyone, for keeping your mics mute. That was great. Thank you so much. It was a lovely experience. Over to you, General E evaluator.
Thank you so much, TM Shamam. I would now like to evaluate the whole meeting in general and promise I'll try to make it as quick as possible. Because I know we are late. So I joined around six forty-five, I was late. So I can't really say that we were late because I was equally responsible for that. Uh, but it was really refreshing to see a new start, a new beginning and to see, uh, different people taking charge and. Uh, taking the roles and different people, uh, taking the positions in the executive committee as well. I am also glad that, uh, I also like the role of the tech host. How the tech host puts so much effort into preparing the slide and, uh, making sure that everybody, uh, gets to rename themselves. And I care with the instructions of how should we, uh, behave in this virtual setup. Uh, so thank you for putting in that extra effort. Uh, with respect to these speakers, uh. We all know that technology is very unpredictable and especially in Karachi, we are not really sure about when the light goes off or when the signals are off. So, but still, we can take some precautionary measures. So speakers, what they can do is they, it's preferable that they check their mics and they check their cameras and. Speakers who tend to on their camera and their lighting, because I saw that there was one speaker whose lighting was, uh, could be improved upon. So that is we can do to make our speech qualities even better. And if some speaker tends to use, uh, intends to use, uh, presentation and slides in their, uh, speech, they can do so. Uh, turn on the presentation when the evaluator is explaining the project details. So we can save some of the time, uh, in that, uh, period as well. Uh, all in all, I'd like to say that, uh, there were in total of eight speakers we promised, but seven showed up and all seven. Were, uh, very well prepared and the quality of speeches was, uh, remarkable. And, uh, one more thing, uh, Toastmaster Tal has already commented on the time that when you're supposed to start, the table topics were supposed to start at eight. But we started at eight twenty and they were supposed to end at eight ten, but we ended at eight forty-six. So that is something that we can always work upon. The timings. And just one more thing, that when, uh, the table topics, during the table topic session, when TM Hiba was delivering her table topics, she wasn't visible. So, uh, like her, uh, her face wasn't properly visible. So the table topics master could have reminded her to set her camera in the right angle. So we could have had a better view of Toastmaster Hiba while she was, uh, speaking. But all in all, I'd like to say that it was a great meeting, a great start to our year. And thank you, everyone, for putting in your efforts as a speaker, as evaluator and as a role holder and for making this meeting a success. I now hand over the charge to the, uh, Toastmaster of the day, uh, the night. Uh, who is the immediate past president of Karachi Toastmasters Club, Toastmaster Imran.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Maryam Arif for your valuable evaluation. Finally, we are moving towards and every beginning has an end and every end is a new beginning. Let's breathe out twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and breathe in the fresh airs of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. With, with prayers that May this year brings enormous success and enormous progress for our club. Uh, before handing over the charge to Madam President, the new president. Uh, let me announce the big four voting. Today's big four are myself, Toastmaster of the evening, Toastmaster Imran Rana. Table topic master, Toastmaster Najum Resby. Table topic evaluator, Toastmaster Zishan Khan. And general evaluator, none other than Toastmaster Maryam Arif. With that, I hand over the charge to our new president, Toastmaster Uruza. Over to you, Madam President.
Thank you, Toastmaster of the evening. I would like to ask Toastmaster Imran Raza. How many votes, oh, sorry, how many, uh, yeah, how many votes do we have? Toastmaster Imran Raza.
I have just a float for the. Am I audible?
Yes, you are audible.
Yes, sir. I have just a float for the big four voting. Uh, can you all just vote?
All right. All right. So as that vote is being collected, I would like to ask some of the, uh, guests and some of the new members. What they thought of today's meeting. So, guess, uh, Panha, what do you think?
Uh, so yeah, uh, it was a good session. Um, obviously, uh, for me, uh. It was after a gap of two, three years, but I enjoyed it a lot. I also learned, uh, uh, quite some things from it. And I intend to, you know, continue with it. Uh, I'll get ahead on the procedures for, uh. How to participate further and more deeply into, uh, these sessions. And I really look forward to, uh, the Toastmasters meetings.
All right. Toastmaster Ali Zeram, you have been really quiet. Can you tell us what are your plans for the future? With Toastmasters. Toastmaster Ali. Are you there? Okay, he's not there. Uh, new Toastmaster, uh, Toastmaster Hina Yamin, are you there? Please cast the vote for big four so we can, you know, uh. Collect all the votes and then have, uh, both counter announced them. All four votes. Toastmaster Hina, she's also not there. There is a certain Toastmaster Muhammad Talah, can we unmute him? Toastmaster Shamam.
Uh, Muhammad Talha, okay. No, he's, okay. I think he has to do it at his end. I can't unmute him.
Okay, one second. Muhammad Talah is me.
Okay.
I changed the name, but then it disconnected. So then it, the same name appeared again. Sorry.
All right. All right. So Toastmaster Wali. Were you with us the whole time? What are your reflections? Why is everyone so quiet? My God. Toastmaster Ali, I can see you now. So please, uh, talk to us. What, what do you think of today's meeting?
I don't think he is here, Toastmaster Wali, he's gone.
All right, Toastmaster Ali Zeram.
Oh, Ali Zeram, okay.
Yeah.
Please, you are muted, Toastmaster Ali.
Ali Zeram, please, yeah, you are unmuted. Please say something so that we can know that you are unmuted.
Uh, Toastmaster Ali, we can't hear you. At all.
He needs to disconnect and connect himself again.
Yeah, probably.
Hello.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Hello.
Yes, Toastmaster Ali, we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, so what was the question?
I was asking you what you thought about the meeting today and what are your plans with Toastmasters.
Yes, uh, the meeting was excellent. Uh, I, I saw, uh, many new faces. And I really enjoyed the meeting and there, there is a newly found, formed, uh, team. And excom, I guess. So I really enjoy the meeting. Uh, and the new speakers are very good and I hope I will start, uh, giving my presentations as well. Thank you.
We hope so too. We would love to hear your speeches soon. Uh, Toastmaster Imran, are we done with the votes?
Yes, we are done.
All right. So please announce this, uh, the winners.
Okay. Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, so today, best prepared, uh, speaker was, uh. TM Tuba. I see here, I guess she has left, I guess.
Yes, left.
Okay.
We'll send it.
And best table topic speaker, okay, uh, now, I, here is very interesting thing. It's a tie between DTM Sharuk and TM Shamam. So both were excellent, I guess, and both have. Both are winner.
No, you are the vote counter, break the tie.
I can't break, I guess the president can break.
No, no, you are the vote.
You are the vote counter, you have to break the tie.
It's a very difficult choice for me.
Otherwise, president will break your head.
You shouldn't have told us, uh, you shouldn't have said who was.
Since they are exposed now, my request is to declare both of them as winner.
No, 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 no. Toastmaster Imran, break the tie, otherwise president will break your head.
Toastmaster Imran, okay, do a toss, do a toss and then, uh, just announce whoever's name comes up.
I guess, uh, for table topic speaker, uh, is TM Shamam, I guess, she was a good guy. So I will choose her.
Now Sharok will break your head.
Yes. Okay, best prepared speech evaluator is DTM Sharuk. So now he will not break my head. Okay. And the last one, the best big four goes to TM Maryam Arif. She was excellent today. That's all from my side. Over to you.
So we have two more, uh, awards like always. We have a critic's choice speaker and a critic's choice, uh. A role player or like every.
For best facilitator.
For, for best facilitator, right. So for the best facilitator, uh, among who is the, uh, Toastmaster Imran? How many facilitators are we deciding amongst?
The ah counter, the timer and the grammadian.
All were good.
So all are winners.
All are winners. Well, for a critic's choice for the speaker goes to Toastmaster Gulam Kadar.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And for the facilitator, that's a tough choice. All were good. What, who are you giving it to? Toastmaster Imran.
I think it should goes to. To myself.
You, you were not a role player.
There's a tough call between Tarha and Sharok. You should, uh, do a toss.
Again, a toss. Okay, so the best, uh, facilitator.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. The timer, the timer's job is to ensure that the meeting remains on time and it wasn't. Whereas Toastmaster DTM Sharuk achieved his objective. So the vote should go to him.
All right. So it's to DTM Sharuk for maintaining, uh, what less than clean ah counter sheet. That doesn't mean that there were no ah counting, uh, the ah counting wasn't done. It was really good, Ben, well done. So with that, uh, let's support everyone starts yawning and everything. Let's, uh, hold, uh. Decide to meet next week. That will be the eighth of January, eighth of July, sorry. And that is the meeting.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Thank you for attending. Uh, it was a memorable meeting in terms of attendance and in terms of fun. Thank you so.
Thank you, Khul Aafiz.